Okay. And we are recording live. So whenever we get everyone on, we're ready.
Thank you, Jen.
Also, Brandy, I wanted to note, I got a message from Cornerstone. They said when they get to new business item C or B for the CMGC construction bond projects that we actually have to close out our regular meeting and open as a local contract review board. And then they'll do all of their things in there and then we'll close the local contract review board at whatever time that is and then we can reconvene into the regular session.
Thank you. So for the record, I just need to say that we're closing out the regular board meeting, opening a local contract review board meeting. And then in that, so, okay.
And then at the end of that, close out the local contract review and reconvene the regular board meeting.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm really glad you know that.
I only, I was told. I didn't know that.
Perfect. Aina's, Tyron, so we've got four of us. We'll give the other members another minute here. Hi, Brian. Are you, we haven't officially started, so I didn't want to say you're going to be the first one that's like, Brian, you're on mute, but.
I realized I was on mute, but I just couldn't find the mute button.
We haven't officially started, I won't, I won't count it against you. Okay, well, it is seven o'clock and I see there's Bob, great, all right. Go ahead and call to order this, oh, Jen?
Sorry, one moment, I just noticed that are, one of our interpreters is over on the other list, I need to get them set up, sorry.
And that's actually great timing because Dr. Morelott can give us the introduction into the Spanish interpretation, please.
All right.
Thank you.
Buenas tardes a todos, como siempre tenemos interpretación para esta reunión. Ahí pueden hacer el clic donde dice español e inglés y ahí tenemos disponible la interpretación para todos ustedes, gracias por haber venido y bienvenidos.
Thank you, okay. Officially calling the meeting to order, perfect. So go ahead and start with our flag salute and Director Pyros has graciously volunteered to lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we've got our review of agenda. We will start with public comment and I believe we have six public comments tonight, so we'll keep those to three minutes for the in-service to the time of our board meeting. After that, we'll move into board comments and superintendent comments. We'll review the consent agenda. We've got a couple of reports this month, one, our monthly financial report from Nikki and also our nutrition and service, transportation service update from Shiloh. We have a couple of old business items, we'll approve the 2021-22 school board meeting calendar and also our plans for our summer board retreat. We'll take a break around 8:25 and move into new business with our food commodity contracts, approval of our CMGC method for construction bonds, I've got to read it because it's tricky. Then we'll hear from Doug with the City of Newburgh on the urban renewal plan, authorize our superintendent to negotiate for bond services and then resolution 202011 federal and state grant funds. And then, of course, last but not least, certainly the most important part of our meeting will be board member recognition for those board members who are moving on beyond their service to the board. So with that, we'll start with our public board comments. And I would like to just quickly remind people that the Newburgh School Board invites and encourages citizen attendance and involvement. The board encourages citizens to share their ideas, opinions, raise questions, concerns or compliments. And thank you to everyone who has submitted a request to speak and for those who sent in comments ahead of time. In order to conduct a timely meeting, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Director Mock will have time cards for you to see. And requests to speak during the meeting are not accepted. When called upon, please state your name, relationship to the district, place of residence and the subject which you'll be addressing. The board may choose not to address your request if your topic is outside the scope of board governance. And we ask that you remember that Oregon law prohibits us from discussing specific employees or their job performances. We also remind you that due to the judiciary nature of the board's role in resolving personnel issues, we cannot hear comments specific to staff or incidents involving current issues under review in the board complaint process. If comments pertain to board actions or specific board members, I ask that you refrain from personal or character attacks. Thank you for taking the time to be here tonight and as a board, the comments we hear really do help guide us in our decisions and help us educate, help educate us as leaders in our community. Okay, with that, we'll get started with Madison and after Madison, we will hear from Sean. Hi, Madison, welcome. Go ahead, whenever you're ready, just look to Director Mock for your, your time cards. Oh, but you're muted.
Perfect. Can you hear me now? Okay. Hello, my name is Madison Klink and I'm a junior at Newburgh High School. I'm also a resident in Newburgh, Oregon. I'm making a statement today regarding the current, a current grading policy IK-AR on page four and why I think it should be reviewed. The policy currently states students who have earned a C or above can retake the course, but they will not receive an NC for the credit, original credit, as their original grade reflects proficiency on standards. Also on this page, it states students may repeat courses for which they earned a D or F. Once the course is retaken or recovered, the original D or F grade is given an NC and the higher grade is recorded on the transcript for the semester in which the course was retaken. This means that if you earn a C or above, you can retake the course, but your new grade will not replace the original one. However, if you receive a D or F, you can retake the course and your new grade will replace the original grade. I find that this is an unfair policy and I believe that students receiving a C or above should still be allowed to retake a course and have the new grade go on their transcript if they wish to. Having good grades in GPA is highly valued to some students and I think if they have the drive to retake a course to maintain those grades, they should be allowed that opportunity. However, I am aware that many students may take advantage of this opportunity and that would defeat the purpose of this because teachers and staff would most likely have put, would have to put in more work to make this possible. My proposal is that you change the policy so that students getting a C or above may retake a class and receive the new grade on their transcript. However, in order to make this possible, there would have to be conditions considering staff would potentially be bending their backs to make this happen. First off, I think it would be fair to say you could only complete this process once because then we might have kids repeating the same class every year and there needs to be room for everyone who wants this opportunity. Next, students might write an essay stating why they want to retake this class, what happened the first time they took it, what they're going to do better this time and promising to treat this as an outstanding opportunity because that's what it is. If a student is not behaving and taking advantage of this pleasure, they may also be removed from the class considering there's no need to waste anyone's time. When someone signs up to be a teacher or faculty at a school, they're putting themselves in charge of these students' future. It's their responsibility to make sure they give students all the tools that they need to succeed. With that being said, if students are willing to cooperate, then I think that teachers can cooperate too.
Thank you, Madison.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we will hear from Sean and after Sean, Matthew.
Hello, my name is Sean Devine. I have a student who graduated from Newburgh High School last year in 2020 and I have a fifth grader at Dundee Elementary that is being promoted to CD Middle School next year. I'm speaking on, in support of Reed Langdon, the principal of Dundee Elementary. There's been somewhat of an uproar, I don't know if it's, if it's widespread, but he sent out an email in regards to some BLM posters that were posted somewhere in the school, I don't actually know where. And I'm going to just go ahead and read what I wrote to the school board. To him it may concern, I have one child that graduated from NHS last year and another student that finished the fifth grade at Dundee Elementary. When I saw Reed's email, I thought it was beautifully written. The analogy of the hurt child on the playground was perfect. The healthy children don't need immediate attention, but that doesn't mean they are marginalized in the process of attending to the hurt child. Supporting BLM is not a political issue, it's a human rights issue. Supporting BLM is not an anti-police protest, it is an anti-police violence protest. Supporting BLM does not mean all lives are not taken into consideration. The nearly 90% white makeup of Yamhill County doesn't need that kind of validation, I certainly do not. I'm a white middle-aged man living in a county that is 88.9% white. Are we to pretend that the rest of the world and its problems don't exist? We don't live in an area with predominantly black citizens who are routinely shaken down, harassed and killed for little or no reason. We don't live that experience, but it doesn't make it any less real. Can we have some empathy for our fellow citizens who are marginalized and not selfishly worry about how we figure into it? Of course, all lives matter, that's implied and obvious. My own brother is a police officer in Texas. I have the utmost respect for him and he knows the protest is not aimed at him. It's aimed at injustice at the hands of a small minority of officers. Do nothing, ignoring it and even covering it up is wrong. Are we to stand for hate and racism? Are we going to get on the right side of history and stand up for everyone as equals? We must choose the side of love and equality is imperative for our future and I appreciated Reed peacefully pointing out what that really means in the case of some posted BLM posters. I sincerely hope the school board sees this for what it is, support for our fellow US citizens that need and deserve it. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Sean. Okay, next, we have Matthew and after Matthew, we will hear from Anna.
Yeah. I'm sorry, it blacked out, is it my turn?
Yes, thank you, Matt, whenever you're ready.
All right, so I'm also here to speak in support of Reed Langdon. I submitted a comment, I'm not sure if that is read into the record at some other point in the meeting. So I'm not going to read exactly what I wrote in the hopes that it does become part of the record, but I just feel that the email that Mr. Langdon wrote was the simplest, cleanest, most human explanation of what the Black Lives Matter movement means that I've ever read. And his metaphor of a teacher who's responsible for 200 kids on a playground, narrowing his focus onto the one who is the most hurt, who's the most in pain, dealing with that and then zooming back out to deal with the whole, to me, it was like, how could anyone not understand that? So I want all of you to understand that this is the America we live in right now. This is not going away. Every single one of you, whether you like it or not, is at ground zero of this enormous divide in America. You'll be dealing with an issue like this every meeting going forward for God knows how long. So I'm just hoping that whatever is the intent regarding how the board decides to handle the BLM posters at Dundee Elementary or at any other school and Reed Langdon's email or the email explaining that policy anywhere else in the district, I hope you understand that however you decide this, we're going to know exactly who you are. It's unavoidable and it's happening to all of you every meeting you attend from here on in. So I'm going to finish quickly, but I just want you all to put yourself in the shoes of a black child at Dundee Elementary who spent their fall and their spring with just a little bit of security, knowing that their principal allowed a BLM poster on the wall, okay? If that child comes back to Dundee in the fall and some school board made their principal remove those BLM posters, how is that child going to feel? I hope you can all put yourself in the shoes of that child and in the shoes of Reed Langdon who had the courage to stand on behalf of decency. And that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Okay, next up, we have Anna and after Anna, we will hear from Sue. Thank you, Ron, you're doing a great job.
Hi, my name is Anna Hinkle. I just graduated from Newburgh High School this year and I live in Newburgh. I'm here to talk about the Black Lives Matter movement and why it's important to keep the associated signs and flags in our school buildings. I'm a white person. There's no way for me to truly understand the experience surrounding recent police killings and hate crimes. I'm here to use my voice as an ally to draw attention to this issue. If we were to remove Black Lives Matter flags from school buildings, it would be silencing students, staff and faculty voices. Removing voices we may not like or agree with could eventually push our democracy in a downward spiral towards fascism, something I for one would like to avoid. The BLM movement is close to many students' hearts because they see their faces reflected in the TV whenever another police killing is reported. For example, Tamir Rice shot by police at 12 years old or Michael Brown at 18 years old. These people being killed are just like our students. They have lives and families and so our students begin to think if it can happen to a stranger, then why not them? That's why these signs are important. They say that we acknowledge the pain and the fear our students feel and it shows that we care for them. One could argue that schools must remain apolitical and nonpartisan. They should not be sharing these messages or the flags that come with them. I agree, a school should be nonpartisan and education oriented. However, teachers are not telling students who to vote for or distributing campaign flyers. Instead, they're expressing their love for their students and acknowledging the need for change in our belief patterns and in our system so that we can protect our students here in Newburgh. The nature of the BLM movement is not inherently political, but instead a matter of social justice. It's no different than students protesting the draft in the 60s or the walkouts of her school shootings. Displaying these flags is not an act of violence or anger, it simply shows support for our students in this terrifying modern life our systems have created. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Anna. Okay, next, we'll have, hear from Sue and after Sue, Carolyn. Hi, Sue, welcome.
Hi.
Whenever you're ready.
Thank you. My name is Sue Huntington and I am a Newburgh resident. I'm deeply concerned by what I have witnessed in this community, blatant racism, and I'm here to make a support statement for the Black Lives Matter signs in our schools. As you can see, I am Caucasian. What you can't see is that I am also Latina, adopted as baby girl Solano and raised in the Valenzuela family. I was raised in an Oregon town like Newburgh. I saw and experienced racism daily, like the many, many times when my father was called derogatory names, the time he was accused of stealing even though I saw who stole and told the manager. And the manager responded, well, it must be confirmed before I just accuse another man. Dare a white man be accused? The countless times I saw pure relief on the faces of those I met for the first time, relief that I was white and not brown. The time I got the job only to overhear, we get to check the diversity box but don't have to deal with her brown Mexican BS. Overhearing my brother-in-law tell his grandmother that it would be okay if I did marry into the family because I was white and none of her friends would know I was Mexican. The time I joined my elder father at the counter line late, only to be, only to be served before him. And when I pointed this out, I saw that ever familiar look on the face of the server, the look of disgust and annoyance and hearing the words, he can wait. I could go on and on with my experiences, but instead, I'm here to say that our students of color can no longer be ignored and made to wait. They are out of time and tired of waiting to be served, supported and heard. As an elected official representing this community, your personal views must be placed to the side. It does not matter where you land on the racism, on the racism spectrum. It doesn't matter if you think there is racism in our community or not, it must be placed to the side. Your role is to listen and I mean really listen. Listen to our students tell the same stories as I have shared. Listen as they tell you they don't feel like they matter. Listen as they tell you they've been waiting a long time to be served equally. We must say Black Lives Matter because white lives already matter. I was never ignored at the counter, but our community of colors ignored daily, countless times. Black Lives Matter is not political, it's a simple fact that must be called out because our black students aren't being treated equally as their white peers. Therefore, to stand up and say Black Lives Matter is not saying other lives do not matter, it is standing up and saying, we see you, we hear you and we will do better for you. As elected officials, please understand your role is vital in helping all our students to be seen and heard. And it's especially important to say this to our black and brown students, to make sure they feel as though they matter because they matter very much and they should matter most certainly to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
Ron, you might have to take over.
Did we lose, did we lose Brandy? I don't see her. Why don't we go ahead, who's the next one up? Jennifer, do you know? Can you hear me, Jennifer?
Yes, Brandy got moved to the attendees as I was trying to move somebody else.
Okay, so she's going to be coming back?
Yep.
Okay, let's let her come back then.
It's just a little bit wonky here.
Okay.
I think Rebecca might also be in the attendees.
Yeah, it's possible.
Oh, really? Yeah, it's doing a lot of flipping right now, so one second.
Okay.
Am I back?
Yes.
I didn't go anywhere, just so everyone understands. That was crazy, okay.
It's actually switching people a lot on me right now, so I'm having a hard time keeping up, I apologize.
That's okay, do we need a minute?
Yes, let me make sure I have the correct people on here.
Yeah, no problem.
I have Carolyn and.
I don't still, I still don't see Rebecca.
Okay, I'm looking for Rebecca here. Get her back right now.
Thank you, Carolyn, for your patience.
Is Rebecca back yet?
I don't see her quite yet.
Every time I click it.
You want to make me a co-host, Jen, I can try to help.
Yeah, I can do that, if it's going to let me do that.
Yeah.
Should I put Jen on three minutes or not? Okay.
Okay. It's telling me that she's been moved back, but it's, she's not.
I see an attendees still on my end, I don't know if that helps.
Yeah, I clicked her a few times, but maybe there's something that she needs to attend to on her screen, I'm not sure.
Y ahora vamos a ver si está.
Oh my goodness, and now we're hearing interpretation.
And you got an ad here.
Okay. One second. I don't know what it's doing.
Zoom gremlins, right?
Yes.
A second, it's okay.
It's kind of like it has a mind of its own right now.
Man, you asked on the quick Q and A whether David Loza, has he gotten in? You asked to have David Loza, help David Loza get in through our, one of our emails, did he get in? Okay, I'm asking non, Shane.
Oh, Nancy.
Nancy?
I cannot get Rebecca to come back to the meeting. I keep promoting her to panelists, but she is not.
Can we ask her to hang up, to leave and come back and see if that helps?
Yeah.
Here we go.
Oh, yes, we just had to talk about it, it's okay. Okay.
I think we have everyone now.
We have everyone, Carolyn's here, all right, let's keep going. Carolyn, so just a quick reminder, three minutes, Director Mock will have your, your time cards for you. Go ahead, whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Carolyn Davidson, a teacher from Joanne Austin. Tonight, I'm here to update you about the project that a group of teachers in our Newburgh School District have been working on this year. Earlier this school year, I informed the members of the board about the effort that this group of teachers were putting in to improve engagement for students during CDL. Myself, along with Mary Ann Hyatt, counselor at Joanne Austin, Stacy Dalton, third grade teacher at Joanne Austin, and coaches Mona Khalil and Stephanie Whedon, third grade teachers at Edwards Elementary and Joanne Austin, respectfully, respectively, worked together to improve distance learning for students, not only in our own classrooms and school, but for students across the district. As a team, we decided to tackle the issue described by the following statement. Elementary students are not equitably equipped to complete independent work and/or attend live sessions. We worked as a team through the Educator Empowerment Academy in partnership with OEA to tackle this issue and to strive to make distance learning more equitable and accessible for all students and elementary students in particular. Through the assistance of AJ Schwans, we were able to connect with many different facets of the community, including the care program, Wayside Friends, Brandy Penner, Inés Penya and other families within our community. As we worked this year, we approached solutions and ideas using human-centered design. We gave empathy interviews to a diverse group of community members and used a variety of resourceful strategies to improve solutions. We built an inclusive table to ensure we were hearing from all users in our system. We immersed ourselves in empathy data to come up with possible test ideas to try, then studied our ideas using a continuous improvement strategy and continuously reviewed data to ensure we were seeing change and collaborated with many other educators throughout our state. As the school district transitioned back into hybrid learning, we had to make adjustments and change to our work as well. Some teachers, the focus shifted to increase student engagement in the in-person classroom, while others continued to focus on building connections with students that were continuing to be served through CDL. Some of the support we provided for students included access to digital journals to communicate with classmates and teachers, lunch bunch meetings to give students unstructured opportunities to interact with one another, as well as choice time activities that included a variety of STEAM materials to increase engagement and support SCL in the classroom. We have spent many Saturdays and hours after school working on this effort to support our students. Going into next school year, we plan to continue to partner with the OEA and remain as participants in the Educator Empowerment Academy. We will continue to face the challenges that this upcoming school year will present and will work as a team to help improve the educational experience for students in Newburgh School District. Thank you and I apologize if I mispronounced anybody's name.
You did great, thank you, Carolyn. Okay, Jen, I think that wraps up our public comments, did I leave anybody out? You're good?
I think we're good.
Okay, perfect, thank you, thank you to everyone. Uh-oh, thank you to everyone who joined us this evening. Uh oh, thank you to everyone who joined us this evening. Okay, next up, we'll move on to board comments, and since this is the last meeting for two of our directors, I think that would be. Respectful to let them go last, so we'll be going a little bit out of order this evening so that they can have sort of the final word of the meeting. So let's just kick it off. Would anybody like to start us off? Okay, yep, go ahead. Dave, thank you.
Yeah, first of all, I'd like to just thank Bob and Ron for all the work they put in. You know, when you're on the board, it's, uh. It is a lot of hours reading all this stuff and, and listening, so even though differences of opinion pop up. Just like to thank them personally for. The hundreds and hundreds of hours they donated to the community in our school district. So thanks, guys. Appreciate it. Really appreciate it, seriously. My second thing is graduation. It was fun to go. It was fun to, you know, again, high school staff did a, a good job getting this, you know, in there. And making it happen with, with tough restrictions. Beforehand, when I parked in the, the north lot, though. I got a chance to spend about forty-five minutes with the transitions graduation. And the transitions graduation is, is really a big deal. The staff over there. Karen and Chris and, and everybody did such a good job to make those students feel so special. And I think the. You know, being there at the school, I, I, many, almost every day would be in transitions in some way or not, and so. Carolyn and all those, those students that were, were good buddies. It was so fun to see them so happy and treated so well. I think that staff over there deserves a, a big thank you from the. Everybody in our town. They just did a great job. It was fun to just be there with them. And then again, the graduation was fun. I thought. Mr. Dugan was the, the, the staff speaker. And he just did a really good job. His ten-foot circle thing was one of the best illustrations I've ever seen. That was really good. He's a great teacher, by the way. And Mr. Tanner, the band and everything, so. Thanks to Tammy and her whole staff for putting on a, a great graduation. That's it.
Great. Um, let's see, Rebecca, do you have any comments this evening?
Sure. I want to thank. All this, the people who spoke tonight. Madison, that was great. We'll think, think about that. Carolyn, the teaching staff that worked so hard on, on CDL. We appreciate the hard work you put into it. And Matthew and Sean and Anna. And Sue, I really take to heart what you say. And all the, at least fifty letters we've received. Emails we've received from, from concerned citizens. On the issue of Black Lives Matter. And I want to be one of those people who support that. Who say, I hear, I listen, I empathize, I want to do better. And I appreciate so much hearing from. The administrators who wrote, the counselors, the teachers. The students, they're the most. They, their words really mean the most to me. And I appreciate. All the time spent to send us. What your heartfelt messages. And even if you don't agree, I appreciate you, you writing to us. And sharing your, your opinion. Too. And I appreciate our, our district, the direction we're going in. And finally, I also want to send my thanks. And appreciation to Ron and Bob. Your integrity, your, your. Work ethic. Your dedication to service. Has been outstanding and you will be truly, truly missed. Thank you so much.
Brian, do you have any comments this evening?
Uh, yeah, I'll just second what other folks have said. Thank you to Directors Mock and Woodward for their service. That's truly appreciated and. I too got to enjoy the graduation at the high school and that was a, a great pleasure to see all those. Inspiring young people. Starting their journey in life, so. Thank you.
Inez, do you have any comments this evening?
I do. I also want to thank Bob and Ron for their service on this board and specifically for. Being a helping hand to me. Both agreed to meet with me when I first got on the board and have listened to my experience. I've been able to change their mind once or twice and. I love that because I have felt heard and that is what a board member should do. Listen to the experience, even if it's different than yours. This year has been. Hectic. To say the least, and. You know, I needed a break and I was on vacation and coming back to the flood of emails. I might have counted wrong, but I counted eighty emails regarding. Principal Langdon's email. Seventy-two of which were in support. And I just feel really warm in my heart to know that. Students, teachers, administrators, counselors, everyone. Is being courageous to speak up against hate and really embracing diversity and. I'm just really appreciative of that because I know that my experience isn't always listened to. But that's not gonna stop me from keeping, from bringing my voice forward because I owe it to the students. The students who are speaking up, so thank you.
I'll go next and then we can have Director Woodruff and Director Mock give their statements. So the last few weeks have been full of celebration as we've been able to recognize our graduating students. And as a parent, I was able to celebrate both my fifth and eighth graders' graduations. As a board member, I was able to help commemorate both the Catalyst and Newburgh High School graduation and the seniors. This is certainly a highlight of board service and we wish for the best for all of our students who are moving on into the next phase of their education and life. The outpouring of support that we're seeing for the leaders of our school district is heartening. The board hired Dr. Morlock to lead our district in service to the students of Newburgh and Dundee, and I feel that he has done that. One of the very first things that Joe did was reach out to our community. In addition to extensive community engagement. In the creation of our strategic plan. Joe began listening to the parents of our community from the start. He met with countless parents, community members, students and staff in the first few months of his service. Additionally, and more importantly, he created a team of district leaders who are listening to the needs of our student and staff. In order to grow and create a system that supports all of our students. If we continue to center student and community voice, we can create an education experience that supports and nurtures every student in each of our schools. Thank you to Directors Mock and Woodruff for your years of service to our students. You are leaving behind a legacy of compassion and academic excellence, and I look forward to recognizing your years of service at the end of this meeting. Okay, with that, Director Woodruff, do you have any comments this evening?
Uh, yes, I just wanted to say how grateful I am to have had the opportunity to serve on the board for the past six years. You know, I was proud of the district when I joined and I'm even more proud now that it's time for me to step away. You know, I think. There's much that's the same about how we do things. There are a lot of fantastic traditions that continue in, in the district and there's a lot that's different. Particularly at the board level, the way we. Interact with all our constituencies, both our. Staff and administrators, our parents, our students is substantially different than it was six years ago. You know, we've. Hired a superintendent who, who has done fantastic work leading the district through. A global pandemic as well as harnessing that. Community love that was pent up and wanting to be more involved in our schools. We've passed a substantial bond that will do immense work improving the, the. Educational opportunities that our students will have. And I just want to thank everybody for allowing me to be able to participate in that.
Thank you. Director Mock, do you have any comments this evening?
Yeah, I do. I want to first say a little bit about. The vast number of emails that we got the last few days. I counted fifty-some, but. There were also a bunch that Brandy had sent out that were responses to. She was been trying to respond to everyone as they come in, and I appreciate what Brandy's been doing on that. I'm proud of Reed Langdon. He was a teacher to my boys when they went through that school and he's been an excellent. Principal, and I thought his statement about the Black Lives Matter signs was an outstanding and well-reasoned explanation. For why we need to make our schools more inclusive. I'm glad that our superintendent supports him. I think it would be wrong, unprofessional and a breach of the people, public's trust for the board to sanction anybody for anything like that, so I'm confident that won't happen. I want to especially among those letters, highlight one that was from Josh Reed that I saw this morning. Which is a carefully argued and meticulously sourced explanation for why we need to do work, why we need to work harder to make our schools welcoming. And effective for non-majority students. I recommend it to all the members of the board. For their, for them to read. I have heard the parents who are concerned that BLM signs might communicate to their students. To their children, that they are not completely welcome in their class, that somehow there's a political divide they're on the wrong side of. I want to say this, no teacher I know of is willing to draw a circle that leaves a child out. No teacher I know of is willing to communicate to any child that I am your enemy. Every teacher I know of works hard every day to communicate all, to all their kids. In the ways that they can hear them, whether this is just content about how to do their math or anything else they're trying to tell them. So I believe our teachers will consider carefully how to. Welcome all their students with special care to make sure the message is clear to non-majority students. Without communicating to any child that the school is against them or counts them as less. So with that confidence, I would like, I, I'm happy to leave that to the teachers. Finally, I want to thank. The voters of the Newburgh School District for giving me the opportunity to serve on this board for nine and a half years. I, I tried to make a list of the issues like Bob did, but I. Got bogged down because I was listing a bunch of little ones, so I'm not gonna try to list them all that we worked on. There were some successes on that list and some failures. I'm generally proud of the progress that the district has made in various aspects of our work. And especially proud of the recent increase we've had in public participation. When I first got there, we hardly ever had anybody come to the meeting that wasn't required to be there. And this has been a real and a way for us to improve our ability to meet, to serve the public by having so many people involved. I appreciate that very much. Finally, I want to thank all the board members that I've ever had the privilege to work with, the ones current and the ones in the past. I think I learned something from every one of you and got to work as a team with each of you on something or other. And for some of you with many somethings or other. I want to especially thank Chair Brandy for the great experience working as your vice chair these last two years. I've enjoyed the way we've worked through things, including the cooperative approach we've taken when we've disagreed. I've especially admired your energy and commitment, your excellent communication skills. The energy you have put into making our divided board work and almost always with good humor. And I've been super impressed how quickly you grew into this role. Finally, I want to mention Bob Woodruff. We are the two graybeards on this board. Well, I'm not sure Bob's beard is. I can't tell. Have you got anything going right now, Bob? I think we've, to combine, we've served at least fifteen years, something a little over fifteen years. I remember Melinda Van Bosse gushing about how you were the best candidate she'd ever seen for appointment to a vacant board seat. With me sitting right there in front of her. But she was right. You were exactly the person we needed as chair in that difficult twenty seventeen, twenty nineteen biennium. When we did a lot of good work, but it was under, under adverse conditions. I'm especially sorry to see your service end so quickly. And I'm looking forward maybe to finding a time for us to debrief about our time on the board, far away from all these guys. All of you will have my prayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Okay, with that, I'm gonna turn it over to superintendent comments. Dr. Morlock, try to follow that up.
That's not so easy. Well, um, so I'll actually start with graduation. A couple of you mentioned it. Both the, I attended both the Catalyst and the Newburgh High School graduation. I want to thank both staffs. For the incredible amount of work it takes to put on an event. You know, first, first off, at Catalyst, the drive-through, people coming in, celebrating. We got to give away a few scholarships as well that were surprises to students, so that was a lot of fun to, to watch the. Surprise on their faces. They got a two or three thousand dollar scholarship they didn't know was coming. To their next steps. That was fun. And then Newburgh High School put on not one, but two full events, and so bringing all the kids together into the gym to be with one another. Of course, I had to follow, you know, the greatest graduation speaker of all time, so when Mr. Dugan did his speech, it was great. And enjoyed that a lot. I think the kids really enjoyed being together. And then getting up early the next day and, and all that staff out there again for a full day. From eight to five of having kids walk across the stage, having their families come up. We had everything from a bike brigade to. You know, single people in one car and the whole range in between. And so again, you know, they made every kid feel special. They had multiple stations, they had lots of staff that were all day. Mark Brown got a really nice sunburn, so. You know, because he was hot in the sun all the time, but just appreciate all the work that the Newburgh High School staff did. To put that together to make every kid feel special in this. You know, the craziest of crazy continuation from last year, so they did a really nice job in graduation. As well as the Catalyst folks making all their students feel. Feel special and celebrated. I also like to thank Bob and Ron. So Bob, you've had six and Ron, nine and a half years. I know that most people do not know. The kind of work that you have to do in the background when you're a board member, the amount of reading you have to do, the amount of thinking. Listening to people, having coffee with folks with whom you may or may not agree and hearing their stories. And it's a lot of responsibility, so I really do appreciate the amount of time and effort and energy that you have taken away from your families or from other things, other duties. To give to the communities of Newburgh and Dundee. It's really immeasurable and that goes for, for all board members. It's just a lot of time, so. Appreciate the near decade for you, Ron, and more than a half decade for you, Bob. You've always been very. Hardworking board member, so I appreciate the, the amount of effort you both put in. We will miss you. Greatly, and we will also understand that you'll find other things to do on a Tuesday night twice a month, so that's also good. And then finally, I wanted to just make a quick comment about. You know, landing this bird. You know, we finally hit the end of this school year. It has been the most amazing collaborative effort among. Our staff, our teachers, our administrators, our families, caregivers, neighbors. Local community stores and churches and. Community organizations, the city. I mean, everybody has really come together to try to hold this thing as we got in and. There were a lot of times that it was imperfect and a lot of times that it was stressful. But I was so proud of the work that our community rallied around to do that, and I know that there was always some disagreement about how we should do it. I thought that overall, we did really an exceptional job and a lot of people worked very hard to do that, so I just wanted to thank all the folks who did that. With the changing guidance, get computers and all those things, but. Our school administrators and our district administrators worked quadruple time this whole year and they did it without complaint most of the time. You know, people got tired out. We all got tired out because it was really exhausting. But I think that I would be remiss if I didn't recognize the efforts of all of our school principals and assistant principals. And of the, the directors and other administrators we have the district. It's, it has been really, really, really hard. But they've done such a good job of doing that and helping staff get there. Of course, you know, we've celebrated our. Teachers, we've celebrated our classified staff. I did not want this to go unnoticed that our administrators also really put themselves out there. For innumerable hours to make this happen, so I just wanted to thank them from the bottom of my heart. I know it's been really hard. We're considering hacking Google and shutting off all mail, email for the world for the next, you know, month or so. Because, you know, you've, you've had so much of it, so thanks to everybody there. Thanks to our school board for the support. Of getting through this twenty twenty-one school year. We're looking forward to having a far more normal and far more recognizable school year. Coming up, so that's, that's the, the bright spot in all of this, so. Anyway, those are my comments tonight. Thanks again, Bob and Ron, and thanks to the rest of the board for your support. And our whole community, we, we made this happen. And we got it across the finish line. Now we'll get ready for the, for the coming year and, and look forward to great things.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we will head into our consent agenda, and I would entertain a motion.
Brandy. I would like to withdraw the. In Newburgh Dundee Police Proclamation for, for discussion.
Okay. Would you be comfortable if we put that under, after Shiloh's report, under new, no, it would be under old business?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll do that after Shiloh's report right before our break. Okay, with that, I take a amended motion.
I'll move that the Newburgh School District Board of Directors approve the consent agenda as amended.
Dave, did you have a question?
So is that on the consent agenda when we're discussing the? Administrators? Is that part of the consent?
The discussing them, what do you mean?
Assistant Superintendent and.
No.
All that, is that on the consent agenda?
I think you're talking about the superintendent, the assistant superintendent contract?
Yeah, is that not part of the consent agenda?
I don't think so, but.
That is, yeah.
It is part of it.
Yes.
I guess before we, you know, prove that consent, I don't feel like we've really had a conversation. About this. I was just kind of curious about, I just had some questions.
Sure.
Some of those contracts, so. We've never talked about that. I know it's been recommended, but. Can we table this and have a discussion about it, or what's the deal?
Well, I think here's what we could do. So Inez made a motion. We could see if there's a second to amend as, or I'm sorry, to. Approve as amended as per Rebecca asking to pull out that Newburgh Dundee Police bit. As, so I guess let's see if there's a second, and then we can move into discussion. We can make an additional motion to amend to pull out that bit as well.
So it's the agenda, so he shouldn't need an emotion to have a poll. He should just. So Dave, if you say you want to pull that out and discuss it, then it's off the consent agenda.
Yeah, I just talk about, so I'd like to pull that off and then have a discussion about it. That would be great. Thank you.
Okay, so since we have a motion, I can ask for a second.
My second.
Okay, so further discussion, Dave would like to pull that bit off. Dave, would you like to make a motion?
I don't, I think, I think Brian's right. He doesn't have to make a motion. He interrupted before there was a motion that had been seconded. I think even on strict Robert's rules, he should be able to have it pulled just like. We pulled, just like Rebecca pulled the other.
Yes, yes, thank you. Okay. Does it matter, Ron, that there's this motion to amend? Should it just include both requests to pull?
We can ask Inez if she still wants to make the motion now that that's also been pulled, and if she does.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so we're pulling out both the administrative appointments and also the proclamation. Okay. Everybody in favor, please raise your hand.
Sure.
Okay, passes unanimously. Thank you, team. It's a team effort. Okay, so we'll put both of those under old business right before our break. Okay, next up, we have Nikki to approve our twenty. Oh, wait, no, that's me, still me. Financial, monthly financial. Thank you, Nikki.
Okay, great. I think you received the financial reports on Monday. They were admitted in the first, first round, but you should have received them for review. And looking at the ending fund balance, the estimate at this time, we're looking at about eleven million. So I'm. Referring to my board notes. Where the reports talk about ten million, but there's still a couple of adjustments I have noted there. And one of them is an adjustment to the transportation encumbrance, so adding back about a million in there. Because we have the full, the full contract encumbered throughout the year. So I think we're still looking good at about eleven million, three hundred thousand. At this time, we're working on closing out some of the big grants. So there'll be some movement back and forth. And I think that number might go up just a little bit more by the time we get all that shuffling done. And also another thing to note. And on the expenditure sheet. We did have our June payrolls, our big payrolls for June already completed when I did this report. So the encumbered expenditures. Contain the June expenses, and so they're pretty solid numbers. So I didn't leave those. I put in everything I knew at the time and everything that has actually happened up to the point of doing this report. So it's really up to date at this point. What else is in there? So on the other funds page, you'll note the different budget adjustments that we have approved. I have those in there. And you'll also see in the two hundred funds of federal and state grants. Later on in the evening, we'll be talking about a resolution to move some funding around between functions in that area. And that really has to do with a couple of these big grants where we're unable to hire the staffing, which typically would fall under a one thousand line. And then we. Use some of that money towards Chromebooks and some different resources that would have been paid out of the two thousand. So that's why I have that resolution on the board agenda tonight. So we'll have the budget authority and this will come out correctly by the end of the year, so. Also in the notes, I included some highlights from. The recent state budget update. And so it's still looking very good as far as the different, the FIA money, the Measure ninety-eight. It's still coming in strong. The one thing you might have heard about is that the governor vetoed the two hundred million dollar transfer from the Education Stability Fund. But there's been, I don't know, be considered a promise, but they're going to backfill that. There's. Pretty certain that we will not be losing that money. We'll still be at the nine point three billion for the next biennium. There doesn't seem to be any concerns around that at this point. See, outside of that, we have our auditors visiting July seventh and eighth to do the preliminary work. Typically, they come in April and May, but they did not this year, so they're kind of starting late with some of their work, but we have them on the schedule. So we'll be moving forward with that. And let's see if there's anything else here to highlight. Are there any questions about the reports? Okay. Oh, and I guess I'd like to also add, and I should have started with this as I was thinking about it. You know, Ron and Bob, I really appreciate your time working with you on the board. I appreciate all the questions, very thoughtful questions. It always, it always helps to. Have different eyes looking at the work and asking those, you know, those hard questions. I really appreciate it, so. You will be missed, and I hope you enjoy your free time.
Thank you, Nikki. Don't rub it in. No. Awesome. Any questions for Nikki? Okay, thank you so much. All right, with that, we'll move into our nutrition and transportation update with Shiloh.
Hello, everybody. I'm going to share my screen with you. Whoa. Hold on one second. It's not letting me.
Shiloh, I can bring it up on screen if you'd like. I think, let me take a look here. Hang on one second.
I got a new computer, so I gotta go through my access and. Do, if you could do that, that'd be great. So I'll just talk as. Dr. Marlock's pulling that up. So tonight, I'm just going to kind of be doing an overview of nutrition services of kind of when I started here at Newburgh Public Schools. Talk about how we kind of navigated the pandemic. And some forward motion of where we're going for. Here in the future, and then we're going to talk a little bit about transportation. Perfect. So you want to go to the next slide, Joe? So just for some fun facts, I talked to a parent yesterday and they asked me if I'd missed the restaurant industry. And I kind of laughed and did some reflecting, and I said, I haven't really left because. Newburgh Nutrition is really, it is the largest restaurant in Dundee and Newburgh. It's a federally funded program that operates on revenue expenditures, just like a regular business, and participation is our driving force. And on the next slide, I just kind of wanted to give you a glimpse of our end of year balances. You can notice that two thousand sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen is when we had some really high participation. It started to drop a little bit after two thousand seventeen. And in two thousand nineteen, which would have been the eighteen, nineteen school year. We lost our CEB school at Joanne Austin, and with low participation, we ended up with a negative balance. And I came on the nineteen twenty school year. We were making some really good positive movement. But with the pandemic starting, we lost a, a really big chunk of participation in March and April. About two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of anticipated revenue. And then twenty twenty-one, what we're ending the school year at, we budgeted for having a carryover of two hundred and fifty thousand. And our budget is really. It's hard because every month that you're receiving, for example, like we're still in June, or we're still feeding students. I won't see the revenue. Coming from USDA. I won't see that till July, so you really have to be proactive with your forecasting. And so I just looked at what we closed in May, which was five hundred and fifteen thousand. We had positive and looking at what our expenditures were for June was two hundred and thirty, so. We're realistically looking at about four hundred thousand dollars for what we've are currently bringing in in June, so that number will change to our benefit. Just want to go to the next slide, Joe. So a little bit about. The nineteen twenty school year. This is when I came on board. And really, my goal was to look at the nuts and bolts of our program and create a new foundation and. Just for our department's growth and really find the nuts and bolts that. Keep this program running and think about how we wanted to improve and move our program forward. So every March, we get a certain amount of entitlement from USDA for every student served. So it's like thirty cents for every student served. You get a certain amount of entitlement that you get to spend towards fresh produce. Or any kind of procurement or diverting foods to companies to get discounts. So we as a group, a nutrition group, I pulled all the managers together, and we really wanted to look at zeroing out our inventory. We had some inventory issues. Some things that were, we were sitting on, and we wanted to liquidate everything so we could kind of start from scratch, and we put a lot of work into it three months, and then. I think I placed my order for the twenty twenty-one school year, three days before the pandemic hit. And so we had a little bit of setback on that because we were on. Uncharted waters with lower participation. That March and April, but during the pandemic, I kind of want to switch to. The things that changed, so we were able to go under SFSP. We usually run National School Lunch Program, and SFSP stands for Summer Food Service Program. Allowed us to serve kids at no charge. And they released several area eligibility waivers for us to go all over Newburgh, and what we did was partnered with First Student. And found the biggest pockets where. Bus transportation, where we're picking a lot of students up, and we launched sixteen sites. And served meals out of buses. We wanted a location where parents could look at. If they found a bus, they knew that there was a food source, so that worked really well for us, and then we transitioned into summer, and summer, we usually have four to five sites. And USDA continued with. Area eligibility waivers that allowed us to expand to nine sites during the summer, so it was. An awesome opportunity for us to actually make it out in Dundee because. When you look at our area eligibility, it really forces us kind of east of college in ninety-nine, and only. We're only able to really serve like the Edwards community. In this general area, so was, we were able to make a big expansion. And typical summer, we bring in about eighty thousand in revenue. We brought in a hundred and eighty, so we did some really good work there. And we're anticipating the summer being extremely more busy with summer school. And Joe, can you go to the next slide? So the start of the twenty twenty-one school year, we were planning on running, running NSLP. And having to go through eligibility with free and reduced and paid statuses. And about a week and a half before we launched into school. USDA announced that we were going to be able to still operate under SFSP and freed all kids for free, which was great. But it really did kind of change how we were going to approach. Our food delivery system. We went from having two hundred and thirty kids signed up. To our Uber style delivering meals to two thousand within a week and a half, so that was a pretty significant jump. But we made it. I have to thank the entire staff. It took EA's, it took an army admin staff to kind of pull it off, and it was. A super great experience, and the numbers were so great that kind of puts us in the position to have. Such a high ending balance for the year, but also to be able to start putting back into our program. As we moved back into hybrid, we did stop deliveries. Just because with the EA support and the amount and buses needed to be. Used for transportation for students getting back into the building, we went to. Focusing on students that were in the building and handing them grab and go lunches. But it was still very important to us to support families that were in co and distance learning, so we did open up sites for general public. Anybody one to eighteen and then five day week boxes. So. As we want, launch into the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, this spring USDA announced that all students will. Be able to eat for free next year, which is super exciting because with the new administration, we see. A lot of the team that he's building are people that have been. Really honing in on universal meals and accessible meals for all students to be able to eat for free, so. I think this is the groundwork for some really big changes for school nutrition, so we're, I'm actually really excited to see what the. Twenty-two, twenty-three school year brings. Not trying to get too far ahead of myself, but. That's what I'm looking forward to. So normally, we operate under NSLP, as I said, a little bit different. We're going to go to a seamless summer option is what they're going to have us. Operate under, and the, and Joe, if you want to go to the next side, next slide. We still have the ability to serve students one to eighteen. So I think as a department goal, we still want to focus on those families that are going to stay in some kind of CDL or COA option. But also still. Feed our community at, at all means possible, so I think we're going to take it in phases, and I'll kind of talk about that a little bit. Some exciting news that. So since twenty twenty, the start, we've put about two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of new equipment into our kitchens, from new dishwashers to ovens. We did purchase, it says purchasing, but we did purchase a new. Vehicle for summer food transportation with a built-in cooler, which is working magnificently. By the way, I have to thank you guys for approving that purchase. Another great thing that we were able to capitalize is our farm-to-school grant. A lot of schools had a hard time utilizing the farm-to-school grant during the pandemic, but also just as our district. In years past, we weren't able to spend all that money. We get a biennium, a two-year allotment of about. About forty-five thousand, and really it should be sixty-nine, but since if you don't, in the previous years, if you don't go through it. They start lowering that amount, so we were able to capitalize and spend all that, and I was able to get a little bit more. From other school districts not using it, so we're going to build our way back up. We should be around the sixty thousand dollar range. So pretty excited about that and just working with our local farmers. And then ranchers getting some local beef in, so we have some fun things planned for next year. DoD is the Department of Defense, so we allocate funds to. Buy local produce and fruit. We diverted about forty-five to fifty thousand. about forty five to fifty thousand dollars for fresh produce and fruit this year. We got an additional thirty five thousand. Schools were having a very hard time going through it. Newburgh School District did not. So every month I was asking for more money and we got some, so I was pretty excited. And it's just some fun things. And I know the pandemic was really hard, but some really good things that came from it is we're able and we're, Newburgh School District, we're a part of the USDA Commodity Council to kind of change what products are going to be available for us to bring into our schools and feed our students. So having a voice on this council, I think is really important for us. I've gotten the chance to be a part of the OCNC Board, which is our biggest co-op purchasing collaborative network that we have. And then ODE forums has really forced a lot of the, I wouldn't say forced, but a lot of directors came together just to kind of brainstorm as we kind of navigated the pandemic, but we also realized how important it is that we continue as we start coming back in person. How valuable it was to brainstorm obstacles as a group. So I'm very excited to continue that in the upcoming years. And then Newburgh School District, we were featured in a documentary that ODE is putting together just to kind of about general education, anything from teaching hybrid to nutrition, transportation, we're featured in this documentary about child nutrition and kind of how we approached it. So that's going to be launching in June. So I will share that with the board when that comes up. Joe, can you go to the next slide, please? So kind of some goals for our department. It's, we're going to be launching a new Titan program, a program that's really going to make us more efficient. We used to have a program that did our claiming and our free and reduced lunch applications. And then we had a different program that did menu analysis. And then we'd had a different program that did state reporting and my goal was, we need to find a program that does it all. So I don't have to look through three different programs. And it's really going to make us more efficient and have reports all being able to talk to each other. So we're going to be launching digital menu boards, which is a part of this program. We're going to start at a secondary level, which will have some student engagement with it and parent engagement where they can look at nutrition information through smartphone or through our website. Other fun things is Edward's Bond. It's been a very humbling experience being a part of the bond process, but Edward's Kitchen is getting remodeled. And I think this is a big opportunity for us to create a space for community. It is a small space for the amount of meals that they pump out. But also for some expansion of doing a centralized kitchen and some catering for our department. So some big hopes coming out of that, but it also made me realize and listening to our BIPOC population and teachers of how much I have to, I have to communicate a little bit more of the cool things that are going in our department and answering questions. I felt that there were some people like we were doing some really cool things and people have these ideas and I was like, okay, we're actually doing that. So my goal is to get that parent engagement, student engagement, community engagement, you name it. To be out there a little bit more. And I had the privilege of doing some parent engagement just around nutrition guidelines and just educating people about our program and some hurdles that you have to go over because it is hard. We have a very low reimbursement rate for students. And what we offer is pretty, it's pretty crazy when you get a full salad bar, you know, juice, milk and an entree for four dollars and trying to cover all expenses. And you know, if we can hone in on the nuts and bolts and be mindful of our inventory and our food costs, we can start doing better things for our students. So increase in communication and then the one part. Brandy emailed me, there's two parts to a farm to school grant. There's one about procuring local produce or anything that's locally grown or packaged in Oregon, which we currently participate in. But the other part is about student education. So Christine from Catalyst reached out to me and as we're working on some bond, we're going to do some preliminary. We've already done some preliminary discussions about building kind of like a working farm, but we need to kind of create our council. So we're going to start building a team that we can start building some garden boxes and building it around education. So I'm pretty excited about some of the work that's going to come out over the summer. And then let's go to transportation. So I am thankful that I'm able to take over transportation. I've met a lot of great people through this last eighteen months over at First Student. I'm excited to continue to work with them. So one thing that I want to improve on is the increased communication to parents and create a communication flow. Oftentimes over the last few months, we found that a parent maybe would call me and then really they needed to go to First Student first because I didn't have the answer. So to try to make a flow that parents aren't having to bounce around everywhere. So I'm going to meet with Bobby tomorrow. We're going to start ironing some of these for some better communication. Safety videos is really important for, so it was on our site and actually already recorded them. I just have to put them together. Implement a technology based routing system. So our our first student did everything kind of by hand, which was insane with running six plus routes a day and all of the athletic stuff that they were doing. And their turnaround time was outstanding for the resources they had, but we know that we need to go to a technology based system for, you know, quicker communication with our parents and then it would, it would streamline a process for us. So bus drivers, professional development, I was talking to Karen and really First Student is a contracted company that we use, but they are a part of our team. And we think that it's important that bus drivers have some alignment with our district procedures. And just how to deal with issues along harassment, bullying. And so we think that's really important. So that's what we're going to try to develop this year to give some support to our bus drivers and to help us out with situations. And then this next year, we're going to have to be looking and preparing for a new contract. So we're on our last year contract for transportation. That was a lot of information. Do they have any questions?
Thank you, Shiloh. Are there questions from the board on nutrition or transportation? Yeah, go ahead, Dave.
Yes, Shiloh, thank you for all you do. That's a lot of, lot of work. I never thought about you had the biggest restaurant in the whole area. That's kind of a good way to say it. Hey, on, on, so the cost, you were saying something like four dollars. I know they get a great value there. So with the USDA saying no charge for, maybe I missed something there. No charge for some, some of the foods we get or all of them. So are we still charging some students the cost for lunches? How does that?
So no, no students will have to pay for lunch, their first meal. The only thing students will have to have money on their account for is if they purchase an à la carte or like at the secondary level, we have, you know, snack bars or if they want a second meal, they would have to purchase it. But overall USDA is going to pick up all the costs for that first meal. So paid students usually by income eligibility. They were paying three seventy five to us and then the state was picking up the other forty some cents. So it's actually a little, it's a little bit over four dollars that we get for reimbursement for every student. But yeah, so USDA is going to pick it up, everybody.
Cool. Hey, another question. It was kind of fun to see your scratch cooking thing in there. You know, I've done some restaurant work in the past, so please take this the right way. So Val used to go in there and get breakfast sometimes at the high school, you know, and he's amazing, right? But those sausages you get for the high school, those things are money. Those things are so good. But like when you get into the, like certain things like French toast and, you know, pancakes or whatever, you know, in the morning for breakfasts. So when he's talking about scratch cooking, because some of that stuff's kind of a little bit thin, you know, it's, it's okay. But will that give those people at those schools a little more flexibility to to like improve on some of those? Things like say French toast, maybe it takes a little more like homemade. Is that what you mean by scratch cooking?
Yeah, and we're going to have to take it phases because when we go to make a movement or what I'm envisioning is we go to move to scratch cooking. It is, we're not just going to pick one school. We want to make it equitable. Like if we're going to make spaghetti sauce, we'll, I will use that instead of French toast. I want to make sure that we're making it for scratch for everybody. And everybody's getting the same. So we're going to take it in layers. We still have our nutrition guidelines and procurement methods. So I mean, anytime you look at like French toast or any of these breakfast items, there's so many different aspects and avenues you have to go. You have to make sure it's procured the right way. I mean, we get the choice of brands that we want to use or, you know, maybe, maybe it is organic or you know, vice versa. Maybe it's local compared to coming, you know, from the East Coast. So those are the kind of decisions that we make as a collective group when we go to these food shows. Sometimes it's gross. I mean, when you can taste like forty different French toast from all these different vendors, but I hope that answers your question a little bit. I mean, I think that's what we're, you know, we're shooting for is to start, we're probably, what I'm looking at is starting more on the lunch entree size. We, we invested in some cryo backing machines with our farm to school grant. Because you can use some of the grant money to purchase equipment. And we have, we bought some equipment like an immersion blender to make homemade soup so we can distribute it out to schools. So it's definitely going to be a few years in progress, but I'm excited to keep you guys in the loop of what we're doing.
No, nice job. Hey, if you meet standards, turn Val loose on that Hawaiian food he makes.
I will.
Love happy people. Thank you.
I have a question. Is, does the free lunch or free food for all, does that also include breakfast?
Yep, breakfast and lunch. And it will encompass kids one to eighteen. As I said, you know, in a typical school year, we, we really just focus on kids eating in the building. And we've really never fed students that have been a part of COA, but we're seeing that huge shift that they're to get them access to nutrition food, nutritious food and the ability to also feed our community out. We're we're going to take it in phases. I said, we're going to focus on the kids coming back into school and focusing on the COA and slowly build out a plan for our community and students that aren't enrolled in school.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions or thoughts for Shiloh? Well, thank you, Shiloh. I think the, the ease, the accessibility that you and your team have created for meals is incredibly impressive. Thank you for that. And thank you for also taking advantage of the state and federal grant monies to enrich our students nutritional experience.
Ron and Bob, I wanted to say thank you. It's been a pleasure working with you guys for the last two years. I appreciate the you guys look through and what you guys bring to the table. So thank you.
All right. Thank you. So we had a little bit of a change to our agenda under old business. We'll go ahead and start with Rebecca. She asked that we pull out the Newburgh Dundee Police Department proclamation.
All right. The reason I asked to bring it out is that I'm still not certain that this is the right time to do this. I would like to suggest we, we postpone this until we get some student voices on the council or on the board and that we, we listen to to the students. And if, if this is really something that, that the students feel supported by the police department, then I could go ahead and vote for this. But, but I also wanted to ask if Brian did look at suggested proclamations for others, city entities that, that have, have joined forces with us. And, and I, I, I'm, I'm I'm really hesitant about, about voting for this.
So I guess I will answer you. Yes, I got with Luke and got sort of ad hoc list of community partners from him. I haven't tried working it into our calendar yet because I feel like that's more of a task for the next board chair. And he also said that it probably wasn't complete. So I wanted to give him some time to think on, you know, anybody he left off. But I am working on that project to get a list of our community partners so we can do more repetitions like this. I actually, Rebecca was going to ask to pull it off the consent agenda and also table it. Because I think it would be very wise of us to list out in that resolution the things that the Newburgh Dundee Police Department actually does for our school district. It's quite a bit. I was talking to a teacher the other day and she was telling me all the different ways in which they help our district. So I think it would help unify the board around the resolution if we were to able to list out the actual tangible things that we are, that they do for us. And I think it would probably make the resolution mean a little more. So I would, I would second motion to table.
Okay.
I moved to table.
I second.
Thank you, Brandon and Rebecca. Is there more discussion?
Yeah, Brandy, I, I, you know, I know I brought this forward. I was looking at a lot of different things that they do also. And I think it would be good to, if we're going to pass something like this, you know, and have the board all behind it, I think it's would be good to have all those things listed out so we can look at them in a, in a straightforward way. You know, before we go to vote. So I would agree. Because I want everybody to be, you know, comfortable with it. So I agree.
Out of curiosity, Brian, I know that the list isn't complete yet, but you have a rough estimate of how many partnerships we would be looking at too.
It was in the neighborhood of thirty to forty. That was on his list.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on the motion on the table? Okay. So the motion was to table this. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? And abstaining. Okay. So it passes six to one with Director Woodruff abstaining. Okay. And then the second piece that was pulled out from the consent agenda was the administration contract. So Dave, that was your conversation. Would you like to start us off?
Yeah, I was just, I mean, we hadn't really, you know, I know those are big, big changes. So I was kind of looking at maybe the big three administrators coming back to the school. Can I use last names or I shouldn't do that?
It's in the board packet. So it's public information.
So Assistant Superintendent for Derek Brown and then for Principal Pugsley, Principal Thonstad. What I, I just kind of, my first thought was is I saw the one contract for Derek and their, what he would, would make and stuff. I was just curious about what salary they've been at and what they're going to. That was kind of a big question.
Dave, can I ask a question? Did you let Joe know that you had these concerns or tell him that you were going to bring this to the meeting?
No, we've never talked about this.
So you're just kind of walking in with a baseball bat at his knees?
Well, let's, let's keep it civil. It's okay, Bob. I, I hear your point. I understand.
Want to know where we're at on this thing. We never talked about it before. So I was kind of curious.
Okay. So you've got questions about that. Okay.
And I have questions around why we're discussing this because per my understanding, this isn't part of our board work, right? We govern, we look at policy and we hire Joe. Other than that, and budget, but we don't manage contracts. Am I right?
Well, if it's not part of our board work, why is it on our agenda?
Well, Ron, correct me if I'm wrong.
Approve contracts. Yep.
Yeah, we approve contracts. We don't necessarily negotiate them.
It'll be for, I mean, I guess, you know, I feel like I'm voting on something I don't know about. If it's like when we did our superintendent contract, it, we got laid out for us. It made sense. We did it. This one, I don't feel like we've laid out the, you know, are we, we talking about the same type of salary increase from what we did with the superintendent or is this a a really big change? I mean, that's what I was curious about.
Sure. We do a very different process with our superintendent because our superintendent works for us. And you know, my advice to any board member would be if you get the packet and you have questions beforehand is the time to find as much information as you can. So you walk into these meetings prepared rather than surprising our, our one employee. uh, rather than surprising our our one employee.
Well, we're talking, I mean, just for example, um, I mean, just depending, I have no reference on what they've earned before. Those three employees, I mean, we're probably north of, you know, we're approaching uh, you know, a high percentage close to, you know, half a million dollars. So I feel like this is something important to talk about.
Dave, if you remember, this was all in our budget documents and the budget committee, all of these positions and how they were funded and how much they would be. So this, I I just want to make sure that everybody understands that the the numbers around these positions have been public information for quite a long time.
And and it was discussed during a budget um, committee meeting.
So can anybody tell me what the salaries are going from what to not, since you guys know all that information and read all that stuff right now?
Dave, I can email you the the change uh, of the of the two. The other one is a different position entirely, so it's it's uh, hiring two. So the position of assistant superintendent is something else that was built upon the former contract from Dave Parker, so we were able to to build it that way. Um, the other ones, I can email you what the the change is. Uh, the only change actually would be in Karen's and not Cass's. Cass's position is uh, is similar. It's the same um, as she is currently doing now with the COLA that all other administrators have been afforded to, like every other employee.
And that position specifically is funded through S R grants. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So for the move with Derek, would you mind speaking as to what responsibilities you're planning to sort of offload onto him or what that?
Sure. There are a lot of uh, day to day operational things um, that I I've been involved in, including HR. I mean, as you recall, we have uh, one director who's now who does both HR and finance uh, together, and that's Nikki Fowler. So I do some of the additional uh, HR work. So we're taking on a bunch of those things, um, as well as uh, some of the other management of the day to day things as I do uh, more and more uh, bond activities. So I've spent hundreds or thousands of hours doing those things, that he'll be taking on um, several of those uh, parts of the work, supervision of principals, other things of that nature.
Thank you.
So this is the move from our consent agenda. Um, at this point, we could, as a board, decide to move on the in the agenda. We could make a motion to table it. We can make a motion to approve it. What is the board, what direction would the board like to proceed in?
I would like.
I think technically we're supposed to approve these contracts. Uh, we usually do it by a consent agenda process, so I I have no idea what the process is otherwise.
Well, it was pulled out, so I mean, that's why I'm treating it as a separate agenda item.
Yeah.
I would move that we, that the Newburgh School Board of Directors approve the the contracts as as stated.
I'll second.
Okay, with the motion in a second, is there a discussion?
We vote on each one separately.
Sorry, Brian, what?
Is that proper, or should we vote on each separately, since they were their individual contracts and they were pulled out?
So the, when it's on the consent agenda, we do them as a bunch, and her motion was to approve them all. I don't see there's any substantive problem with that.
Thank you for the clarification and questions. Okay, there's a motion in a second. Is there discussion? Okay, see none. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. And those opposed? Okay, it passes five to two with Director Shannon and Brown in opposition. Okay, so it's uh, eight thirty-two. Let's go ahead and take a break until eight forty. I'll get an extra three minutes tonight. We'll see you back here at eight forty. Rebecca, you didn't keep me on track. I missed two items under old business that we have to revisit. I'm gonna blame it on you. Is that okay?
Uh, okay, okay. Uh, no problem. What what two, what two business items?
Our board calendar and also board retreat dates.
Oh, oh, God, it's sorry, sorry.
I got distracted by by having to pull things off the consent agenda.
Yeah.
It can't be Rebecca's fault. It's gotta be the vice chair's fault. I think I think you need to get rid of the vice chair is what you need to do.
Okay, he's fired. Completely on Ron's shoulders. Not reminding me. I was testing you. That's what was happening.
Well, this is part of your excellence. I got really lazy. I wasn't keeping track either.
Okay, I was proud of us for being relatively on time, and I realized, oh, wait, a couple of items, but that's okay.
How many people are are attending?
Um, I see seventeen, but it was up in the twenties at one point.
Actually, we're up in thirties at one point.
When it says forty-one, why would it say forty-one? Is that everybody? It's everybody, both sides, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the attendees and panelists. So we have about another minute. Hopefully our other uh, board members come back if they hear me chattering away. There's Brian. I don't have the second counter on my clock. Maybe I should install that to see like how close we're actually getting.
I think we were just so glad for a little break.
Yeah. Bob's back. He knows he's back. Dave still has a few seconds. Okay, it's eight forty. I will call us back into session, and hopefully Dave will join us very quickly. Um, I apologize, I missed two items on our um, old business. One is approving the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school board meeting calendar. And the other is discussion around our school board retreat. So let's start off with the calendar.
So I had a question about the calendar. It looks like we only have one meeting in August, but my recollection is we usually have two in August. So why the only the one meeting?
I think we generally only have one, and we are looking like we're probably gonna be doing our retreat in August as well. So we were just trying to make sure that people had a little bit of downtime in the summer and also in accordance with the extra time that was gonna be needed for that retreat. It's a good question.
Did we have two in August last year?
It's a good question.
We've done it both ways. We've had sometimes one and sometimes two. I think two years ago, we only had one in August. Um, I think that's my best memory, but we have had two sometimes. Uh, I don't, you know, it's
Greg just clarified. He let us know that traditionally, we only have one in July and August, but last year we had two in August due to COVID and trying to make sure we were all on board for what was happening in the district around that.
You also want to make sure that you're giving, hold on a minute. Giving your staff adequate time to prepare for, you know, helping onboard and uh, orient the the new board members that'll be starting in July, so that'll be taking some of their time prepared for those meetings as well.
Well, I would entertain a motion or further questions?
I move that the Newburgh School Board of Directors approve the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two uh, school board calendar.
I'll second.
Okay, motion in a second. Is there a discussion? All right, all those in favor, please raise your hand. And it passes unanimously. Okay, the second piece was our board retreat. So it looks like, so we were trying for weekdays in July. Um, it doesn't look like there's necessarily one that uh, our current directors and our new members and our superintendent could get to. So there's a couple of things we could do. We could choose to pick one of those dates and expect that that person will be absent, or we could look into August. How would the board like to proceed?
I would suggest we look into August uh, and also consider weekends, because we haven't actually been including weekends on the poll, the polls. So I think that might work better for people.
Yeah, I think the reluctance in including weekends was just in recognition of staff time associated with it, but if if that's kind of the, you know, the only thing we can do, we could definitely include it in the poll.
Hey, Brandy, the the, looking at those uh, comments, it seemed like uh, you know, some people were open to the six to ten slot and others were not. You know, so weeknight might be pretty, pretty rough to get into. I mean, it's late for some people and it's okay for others, so it seemed like it was kind of a tough one.
Okay, so.
I'm good on that one, but I know others, they're not, so I I I get it totally.
So what I'm hearing is, would we like to ask Jen to send out another doodle poll and for August dates?
She already went out already.
Yeah, I already did that, Brandy.
Is it possible to amend that to include weekend days?
I, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I'm I'm good for weekends or weeknights, but um, so I'm open either way.
I was just asking Jen if she can modify that poll she sent out to include some weekend options.
I can do whatever you direct me to do.
Yeah, I mean, seeing the results of this, I'd be fine with including some weekend options too, and then seeing what works out for the board and also new members. If everyone's comfortable with that.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Jen, for working that doodle poll magic. Okay, so next, now we are moving on to new business, and we'll have our food commodity contract um, conversation with Shiloh.
All right, so our first um, contract is an extension um, for Cisco. Part of the OCNC board um, went out four years ago and procured a thirteen million dollar contract that we are wanting to do our last possible extension year for the upcoming school year. Does anybody have any questions on that? Do you want me to go through all of them, Brandy, or are we gonna go one at a time?
Um, we'll go one at a time. So right now, um, this one is for the approve, the the motion would be to approve extension of food products and supplies with Cisco.
I'll move that the Newburgh School District Board of Directors approve the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two food product supply renewal of RFP five three oh one seven to Cisco Portland.
I second.
Okay, with the motion in a second, is there discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. And it's approved unanimously. Okay, let's see. So the next one, Shiloh, will be for the Spring Valley Dairy.
Yep, um, so RFP D twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-five, last year we went for um, we represent twelve school districts. Um, I headed up this RFP um, and Spring Valley was awarded, so we would like to do in another um, additional one year contract with them. Uh, everything is still the same uh, prices only can getting be increased through the uh, federal milk calculator, so there's no adjusted prices. They've been awesome to work with and have adjusted very well um, during this pandemic, so we're looking to approve that and continue that relationship.
Just curious, is this a local dairy?
Yeah, so Spring Valley, it's kind of a co-op dairy, so we actually getting Alken Rose Dairy. Now I heard Alken Rose was bought out, but um, they are out of Salem, locally owned business. Before, we were using um, a Washington, uh, Meadow Sweet was a Washington company, so it was kind of nice to bring it back into Oregon.
I'll move that the Newburgh School District Board of Directors approve the one year extension of RFP E twenty twenty, twenty twenty-five with Spring Valley Dairy Dairy to serve the Newburgh Public Schools during the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year.
Oh, I think Brian beat you on that one. Good. Motion in the second, is there discussion? Okay, all in favor, please raise your hand. And it passes unanimously. Right.
Right.
Min distributing.
Yep, so, uh, last one is our bread RFP that McMinnville headed up for us, the same twelve school districts that did um, Spring Valley Dairy. So we're looking at continuing that, um, extension of a one-year contract for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Another great company that's been awesome for our school district, so.
I'll move that the Newburgh School District Board of Directors approve a one-year extension of RFP B twenty twenty, twenty twenty-five with Goodie Man Distributing to serve the Newburgh Public Schools during the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year.
I second.
Okay, the motion and the second is there discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. And it passes unanimously. Thank you, Shiloh.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have a potential approval of our CMGC method for construction bond projects. And it looks like we have, um, a guest here, Rick. Are you available?
Brandy?
Yes.
Aren't you supposed to, um, convene the meeting?
Oh, jeez, thank you. See, it's a good thing that you're paying attention. Thank you, Rebecca. Okay, I'm sorry, for everyone who's, who's in attendance. So this is a little tricky. We've gotta do, um, some business. So we're gonna convene the general meeting of the Newburgh School District Board of Directors. I'm gonna call to session, um, the, a meeting under local contract review board. So we are now in session under that. Thank you, Rebecca. Rick, thank you for being with us tonight.
Thank you. Good evening Superintendent and Board and anybody else who is listening in. We're really excited, um, to meet you. We've been working, um, with district staff for several months now. Um, we have launched, um, the bid process for some twenty twenty-one projects that we'll give you an update for at an upcoming board meeting during the general, uh, session. In Oregon, there's three ways to buy construction. There's design, bid, build, where you hire an architect and, and then you take a project out to bid and you award it to the responsible low bidder. Many times when we use that process, we, uh, go through a pre-qualification process so that we receive bids from contractors that are qualified. It really works well and, and, uh, we've been doing it for a long, long time. The other way is design-build. Design-build is a form of construction where you only have one contract and under that one contract, you have your designer and contractor and the district signs one contract. We use those from time to time on complicated mechanical, uh, systems when we just wanna go in and only fix the mechanical system. Uh, we're doing that in several districts, um, uh, as we speak. And then another process that our company has used about a hundred and twenty-five times in the thirty-seven bonds that we've worked on since I started the company is a process called CMGC. It stands for Construction Manager General Contractor. It takes board approval in order for the district to advertise a competitive RFP and select, um, a firm or firms to do the projects that, um, we believe could be advantageous for the district to consider. The three projects that, um, we're proposing are the addition and renovation at Newburgh High School. It's gonna be a complicated phase project. There will be work done while students are on campus. And, um, we also want the contractor to go and do some detailed investigations of the existing building so that we avoid, um, having to solve, uh, issues with change orders. Change orders happen, but we try to reduce them with this process. The other one is the replacement of Dundee Elementary. Been working with the district for a while. Uh, we have started due diligence on the new property. Um, as that due diligence, uh, is completed, we'll start looking at, is there a way to do the site earlier? Maybe we need to phase the construction which allows design to go on longer. We've been doing that in Hillsborough and we did it in Gresham, uh, in this last bond cycle. So we think that process will be beneficial. And then the last project we're asking for approval is the project at Edwards Elementary School. Uh, again, uh, as you heard earlier in the board meeting, we're gonna renovate that kitchen, do some great work there. And we think that having a CMGC on, uh, board will help us. Some of the responsibilities that are in the findings for the firm is during the design phase, they do site investigations. They give us cost estimates so we can make sure we stay on budget. They can go through early bid processes and, um, buy long lead items. With COVID, manufacturing has not kept up with everything that, um, is needed in the construction business. And, um, with this process, we'll have the ability to buy some things early, uh, store them on site. Uh, we use that recently on a big project in Hillsborough where lumber was gonna go up forty-five percent. We bought it and stored it and saved the forty-five percent and it ended well. If you look also at the rationale to utilize the CMGC process, we, we, we expect multiple bid pack to, which again, we expect, you know, procurement of long lead items. And also what we wanna do is, you know, the staff comes back every year, right, about August twenty-sixth. And we wanna have projects done when staff gets back, not still painting and, and being in the building while staff is there. We wanna be ready for staff to get back. The process has had incredible cost management. Um, again, we've used it about a hundred and twenty-five times successfully. Another thing that we're gonna do is, we're gonna get a detailed safety plan, um, so that we will be able to separate, um, construction and learning, um, in a way that, that the construction projects don't impact learning. And there's some public benefits. Value engineering is a process where our contractor helps us look at alternative ways to do the same thing. And so, um, that's some of the rationale and some of the reasons why we would like the board to consider it. Do you have any questions? Um, in order for you to approve it, um, the board will need to vote and approve the findings that then will allow us to start the request for proposal process.
Right, thank you, Rick. Are there any questions? No, I would entertain a motion.
I'll move that the Newburgh School District Board of Directors, acting in the capacity of the local contract review board, review and approve the findings of fact supporting a specific exemption from competitive bidding requirements for the use of the construction management general contractor process for the two twenty twenty-one projects at Newburgh High School, Dundee Elementary School and Edwards Elementary School.
I second.
Okay, the motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. And it passes unanimously. Thank you, Rick. I am going to convene this local contract review board meeting and bring us back into session under Newburgh School District Board of Directors meeting. Next on our agenda is hearing from Doug Rux from the City of Newburgh on the urban renewal proposal. Hi Doug, thanks for joining us.
Hi Brandy, how you been?
Good.
Good. Good evening, board members. Thank you for having us this evening. Um, we're going to give you a presentation on the urban renewal program proposal that we've been working on for the last year and a half. I'd like to thank Dr. Morlock. He has spent the last year and a half with me. So, uh, I appreciate, appreciate it, Joe, very much.
No worries, I got you on the bond one before.
That's right, that's right. Um, I also have with us this evening, Dan Weinheimer, our city manager, and Elaine Howard from Elaine Howard Consulting. She is our prime, uh, consultant on doing this project. So I'm going to share a screen and hopefully it will all pop up and you now can see it. So, moving down. Come on. Technical difficulties. There we go. Okay. So we're gonna start off with what I've been calling setting the stage. And so this is a process, uh, maybe I'll start with, this is a process, it's called consultant confer under ORS four fifty-seven. Um, so I will go through and give you a presentation of how we got to where we're at, but you, we have to set the table, set the stage at the beginning. So the graph that's on your left identifies a, a series of activities the city and the community have undertaken over the course of the last five years. So this all started off with, uh, the city putting together an economic development strategy. And in that economic development strategy, uh, one of the things that was identified was the possibility of an urban renewal program to create, uh, greater economic prosperity for the community overall. We also then, uh, put together a strategic tourism plan. And so, uh, that one also identified in the, in the mill district area, uh, what we called some moon shots. And so some redevelopment activities and potential activities that could attract tourists. Then we worked and updated our transportation system plan. And then we also did a downtown improvement plan. So twenty sixteen was a busy year. There had not been a, an update to our downtown plan since nineteen eighty-six. And so we got some state grant money to be able to do that. We did a lot of public outreach and the graphic that's in the center of your screen is the ten big ideas that came out of that downtown improvement plan. And the real focus was to create a walkable pedestrian-friendly downtown, having connections to the residential neighborhoods to the north and to the south. Transportation improvements, there's some art pieces in there, additional housing along Second Street, uh, and some gateway features. And then there's some catalysts, uh, what we called core catalyst projects in the downtown. When we moved to twenty seventeen, um, we updated our water master plan. By the time we got to twenty eighteen, we updated our wastewater master plan. Then we had another busy year in twenty nineteen. Uh, we did our community visioning program. And there we had thousands of residents within Newburgh, uh, create the vision of what they wanted their community to be like twenty years into the future. And so it, it ranged from, uh, leadership issues to downtown issues to economic development issues. So it's a wide variety, but it was the first really comprehensive community visioning from the citizens of Newburgh about what they wanted their community to be in the future. And again, the urban renewal program came up as one of the potential tools, uh, to move that forward. We also worked on the riverfront master plan. So we got some other grant money. So the bypass went in, cut through the middle of the old master plan. The old master plan did not include the mill site itself. It was land that was more to the west. And out of that, urban renewal came up as another identified tool, uh, to have that plan come to fruition. And then we did a housing needs analysis. And then in twenty twenty, we updated our economic development strategy to address COVID. So all of us have been going through that now for the last six, fifteen, sixteen months. We did an update to our housing needs analysis. And so that's looking at what our housing needs are for the next twenty years. We had to do that because there was a new population projection that came from Portland State University. Uh, we also did an economic opportunities analysis. Uh, the last time we had done one of those was in two thousand and six. And urban renewal again was identified as a potential tool. From all of that, we started then looking and convened a citizens committee, and I'll get into a little more detail, but we did an urban renewal feasibility study. We created an urban renewal agency and then we did the implementation regulations, the land use regulations for the riverfront area. So here we are in twenty twenty-one. We've updated our infrastructure plans for transportation, water, wastewater and stormwater to address the riverfront area. And we are working on the urban renewal plan. So the graphics that are shown here, the top right is the one for the urban renewal area or the master plan area down in the riverfront. You'll concede that there's a, uh, bunch of green space area down along the river. There's, the red is for mixed commercial. The medium yellow is for medium density. The darker yellow is for high density. The purple is for industrial and the brown is for a mixed, mixed use kind of component, uh, but it also allows industrial. And then the graphic on the bottom right, because someone may ask, and I would, is, well, how often is urban renewal used in the state of Oregon? Well, there's over a hundred and thirty districts in both rural areas and in urban areas around the state of Oregon. So Pendleton and Umatilla or Klamath Falls or Coos Bay, uh, Lincoln City, you know, kind of the rural or coast areas. And then you also have them operating in the major or the much larger, uh, metropolitan areas. I don't wanna move. Seem to be locked up.
Okay, it's happened to all of us.
Yeah, see if I can get it to work here. Well, it's not working. So I'm just gonna keep talking because I pretty much know what's on all of the slides. If you'll bear with me. And I'm also made sure I made a hard copy in case this happened. So the next step that we moved into was, uh, the feasibility study process. So we started this in January of twenty twenty. And, uh, it just completely went away now. Okay, so we started it in January twenty twenty. And we finished that in July of twenty twenty. So we had an ad hoc committee that was part of this program. Try to start this again.
I think Elaine might be trying to.
Yeah, Doug, I'm trying to get it up for you.
All right, thank you.
It's also in the board packet too, for anyone following along.
So we created an ad hoc committee. Uh, they met six times in preparing the feasibility study. We did a lot of public engagement as we were going through that process. Of course, we were in the middle of the pandemic, so that things made things more challenging for us. Uh, but we did have information up on our webpage and we have a robust webpage, uh, that is visible to the public as a whole. We produced and prepared fact sheets. Uh, we did some videos. So Elaine gathered some videos for us to break down urban renewal in the context of, you know, two to three minute videos to understand the basic principles of how urban renewal operates and works. Uh, we did community presentations. And then we also were out at the, uh, Wednesday market. So there were over a month, we were out talking with people and handing out our fact sheets and our flyers and so forth. And then, of course, social media. We briefed our planning commission and city council as we were going through that entire feasibility process. And one of the important parts is that we were informing the administrative heads of all of the taxing districts that cover the city of Newburgh. So we make sure that they were up to speed of where we were at. So next slide, there we go. Thank you, Elaine. You saved me again. So the feasibility study comes in two components. First is the executive summary. And then, of course, there's the full feasibility study. And so that was accepted by the city council in July of twenty twenty. Next slide. Uh, the next step in this process is that the city council established an urban renewal agency in August of twenty twenty. And at that time, they declared that there were blight conditions. And we had to make a determination that there was blight in conformance with ORS four fifty-seven. And our blighted issues really addressed and focused on inadequate infrastructure. So then from there, we moved on to the preparation of the plan and the report itself. And so here, the committee, uh, met eight times. And so they had a big challenge. Uh, we started with a list of potential projects that totaled a hundred and eighteen million dollars in twenty twenty-dollar values. And the charge and challenge for the ad hoc committee was to whittle that list down to just a little over fifty-nine million dollars. And so they came up with some priorities about, uh, industrial land and employment first, uh, the mixed vertical commercial and the riverfront in the downtown area. Then the high-density housing and then the last focus area would be single-family residential. So again, we went through public engagement and, and you can see on the slide those things that we did, materials there. We continued to brief the planning commission in the city council. And at those strategic points in preparing the plan, we also provided information to the, uh, taxing districts. And so they were informed of where we were at and the direction that the committee was going. So the urban renewal area shown on the slide on the left or the graphic on the left and it's six hundred acres in size. The maximum indebtedness amount is a hundred and six point four million dollars. Uh, it's connected by River Street and Blaine Street. So that's what connects downtown to the riverfront area to create one urban renewal district. It's always important, as I've been giving these presentations. It's always important, as I've been giving these presentations over the last year and a half, is that urban renewal does not increase your property taxes. And there may be questions later and Elaine can kind of further elaborate on that. Next slide. So now I kind of want to walk through the sub areas. So the committee, to help them through the process, asked staff to create sub areas and so that they can look at infrastructure in relation to, you know, their hierarchy of industrial unemployment lands to this vertical mixed use to the high density residential. So the graphic on the left, which is sub area A in purple, is the mill site. And so many of you, I'm sure have seen the mill site is going away. It's intended to be down and removed by the end of September or so. And so they're actively doing that. So the brown lines are transportation corridors or roadways. And I should say that with all the transportation roadways, there's also the underground infrastructure sewer, water and storm drainage. So there's improvements to Wainouski. And that is a freight route. So that would be the route to take the industrial employment, the trucks to get them out to highway two nineteen. The yellow line through the center is an east west road, and that road may actually may move a little bit further to the south. And then there's a road that we call the bluff road, and that's up on top of the bluff. And it would connect River Street to Dog Ridge Road, which then connects to Wainouski. There's also a green line that you can see just south of the, of the bluff road, and that's an esplanade. And that was brought up by the citizens when we did the riverfront plan. So that would provide opportunities to view the Willamette River, French Prairie. It also gives the opportunity for workers. So where our modeling is shown, maybe three or four hundred workers could be more on that mill site in the future and give them a place to go get their exercise during lunch. The graphic on the right is sub area B and it's south of the bypass. Back, back up one lane, please. There you go. Then, so there's the esplanade continues following the bluff and would terminate out at the end of waterfront street. There are transportation and infrastructure improvements in River Street, south of the bypass and in fourteenth street. And then there are some green lines along River Street and fourteenth, and that's the part of the bypass trail. So portions of the bypass trail are already done along eleventh and along Weatherly, and this would connect that missing link in between. There's also a railroad crossing that needs to be done. So as additional housing and new commerce and industry occurs, traffic volumes will be such that the rail crossings at both at River Street and College Street will need to be upgraded to have gate arms. Next slide. Sub area C is north of the bypass off of Weatherly Way in part, and there's a new pump station. So this is really for wastewater system. And the pump station is important because sub area B, by and large, flows to the west. And then we'll go underneath the bypass and go to this pump station. And then the wastewater will be pumped back towards River Street, where then it goes back into a gravity system. It goes to our wastewater plant. Sub area D. And this one is an extension of Blaine Street. So Blaine Street stops now at ninth. And this would be a new roadway that would parallel the railroad tracks and connect back up with College Street. The reason for that roadway is based upon the modeling we did for the riverfront plan of the traffic volumes and trying to disperse that. So there's three ways basically to get into the riverfront area. Blaine Street, River Street and Wainouski. We also identified or the committee identified improvements to College Street. And so if anybody's driven down college, it's in pretty rough condition. It's a county road at this point. But it would get improved and widened and sidewalks and the underground infrastructure, and then it would also get the railroad crossing improvements. Next slide. Then we move to sub area E and F. So E is north of the bypass and to, to the east of River Street. So there'll be a theme here that you'll see. River Street improvements all the way from fourteenth to first street. That would be widening the roadway, upgrading the underground infrastructure, bicycle lanes, sidewalks. We've all walked it. There's narrow sidewalks. There's no ADA ramps along that roadway. And sub area F, like I mentioned, is a continuation of those River Street improvements. And this section is between ninth street and third street. Next slide. Sub area G. This is Blaine Street. And so the green area is by and large land that's identified for high density residential development. So this would be redevelopment opportunities. And so the infrastructure improvement here would be water. What we found through a different process and analysis is that we have some fire flow deficiencies in the residential area, south of downtown, down to the bypass. And so to have that higher density residential occur on Blaine Street, there would be an upgrade to the water line. Sub area H is the downtown area. And there's a lot of things going on in the downtown. So the brown line through the middle is first street, and that's doing what we call a road diet. That would be removing one lane of travel, widening out the sidewalks to create pedestrian friendly environment. That's what the community identified in their downtown plan. They wanted a, a walkable downtown. There would be some elements of the roadway that we need three lanes because of traffic volumes. The yellow line south of that brown line is utility undergrounding. So there's electrical lines and telecommunications lines. And so to get the three to four story development that's identified in the downtown plan, that overhead utility needs to go underground. We've coordinated with T V F and R, and they said, we can't get aerial access to a three or four story building because of those power lines. The blue lines that you see running north, south, those are water line. Downtown is the oldest part of the community. And we have undersized, we've got four inch lines, six inch lines. We don't have the fire flow that we need. So to try to go vertical, which was one of the priorities of the committee, is that we need to upgrade and upsize water lines in the downtown area. And these locations are strategically identified to correlate to undeveloped or redevelopment sites within the downtown. Then in the center on Blaine Street, you see kind of two circles, and those would be two new traffic signals. And those traffic signals are necessary again to address the traffic volumes in and out of the riverfront area. There's another circle, and that would be an intersection improvement at Hancock and College Street. That when we, the committee identified only partially funding and the balance would come from other funding sources. The last, but not least in this is the downtown businesses and through the downtown coalition in the chamber is two additional public parking lots downtown. And we can't say where, so that's why we kind of put a cloud around the one hundred acre plus or minus downtown area. And in the future, we'd have to identify where those parking lots may go. Next slide. Elaine, I will turn this over to you.
Thank you. So as Doug said earlier in the presentation, urban renewal does not impact an individual property taxpayers. The money from urban renewal comes from the different taxing jurisdictions who levy taxes within that urban renewal area. For the Newburgh School District and the Education School District, the impacts are different than for the regular taxing jurisdictions. For regular taxing jurisdictions, it's a direct impact on the amount of future revenues that they may get from the area. Your impact is an impact to the state school fund. Your amount of money that you receive is based on a per pupil basis and other factors that are made whole by the legislature when they establish a budget for the overall state school fund. And I'm sure Dr. Marlock can do a better job of explaining that all than I. But over a thirty year duration, the expected impact to indirect impact to the school district, but direct impact on the state school fund is about forty four point eight million dollars. That does not reduce any existing revenues. So they continue getting their revenues off of the assessed value at the time an urban renewal district is established. It impacts just future revenues based on increased growth. In many urban renewal areas and in this urban renewal area in particular, that growth may not have occurred, but for the investments being contemplated with urban renewal funding. In other words, all of that infrastructure, this is almost one hundred percent infrastructure for this plan. That infrastructure provides the capacity for that new development to occur and provides increased density to be allowed within the urban renewal district. That could not happen unless those projects are completed. And again, your schools are funded through that state school fund. So although that is money that comes out of that state school fund, it does not directly impact the school district. I was just going to tell Doug to go to the next. This just shows annually how that progresses over time because it starts at the assessed value at the time the area is established and those growth increases are based on the three percent growth that all of our properties are allowed to increase as limited by state law plus potential new construction within the area. So it starts out in fiscal year in twenty twenty three at an estimate of around eighty seven thousand. But in twenty fifty two, the estimate is nearly four million dollars. One thing that this plan has that is not required by the statute and not all urban renewal areas have is a duration provision. That means that the plan won't go on forever and ever until it reaches that maximum indebtedness number. It means that this plan is written to last thirty years. If the growth doesn't happen, that is expected to happen within the area. The plan is written so that any changes have to be through another substantial amendment. So a really big and difficult process. And that is what helps give some assurance to all of the different school districts. Fire the TV F and R and other districts that this plan actually has a termination timeframe in it. The other provision that was added to this plan that is not required is a re-review of the plan every five years to look at the projects that are being projected and where they are on their financial projections. And with a required consult and confer with the taxing districts at that time. So to let you know. All urban renewal districts in Oregon are required to do an annual report every year. And that annual report is supposed to be sent to all taxing districts, and this plan has that component built within the plan as well as the statutory requirement. So the urban renewal agency will every year send you an annual report that tells you what their expenditures are, what their future budget is and what projects they expect to undertake along with the impacts on the taxing jurisdictions. And that is our formal presentation. We are both and the city manager is also here, happy to answer any questions that you might have. I, I want to add one other thing is a thank you to Dr. Marlock for participating in the task force, the advisory committee. We had many meetings and it was a very, a very good process with the taxing districts being involved, and we appreciated his input.
So the invitation. Go ahead, Doug.
I was gonna say, Elaine, you want to stop sharing that way everybody can.
So I just wanted to quickly remind the board, we're not making any decisions or motions on this this evening. It's purely for informational purposes. So if there's questions for anybody from the city, go ahead.
What is the impact to the Ewing Young Park?
The, yeah, so we've had conversations with CPRD on that. And so when you are driving down Blaine Street and you cross ninth, you basically kind of come into, it looks like a narrow driveway. And so our engineers, when they would design the project, would be such that that road may continue over the railroad tracks and can then kind of shift over. And so the road would parallel Ewing Young Park. And there would actually end up being a bridge because there's a ravine down there. There's actually, there is a railroad trestle on the railroad track. A lot of people don't know that. And so there would be a bridge that was there. And so when the park district was updating their Ewing Young master plan, we shared with them to reserve a space for about fifty five or sixty feet for that road to mirroring and parallel the railroad track in the future. It would not displace any of the existing improvements that are there. The BMX park, skate park and so forth would stay in place.
Thank you.
Hey, Rick, on that one, like when the, the, the tracks come out of the old mill and then they go down Blaine Street. How will that, how will those be treated moving forward?
So the intent is to keep the rail line. There, there's not many rail serve sites for industrial in the state of Oregon. So the rail line is there. It's actually currently owned by CDC to operate trains on the track. They would need a franchise agreement. And so right now, our, our engineering department is working on a safe routes to school around Edwards. And so we're looking at those ADA ramps and so forth. And as future development occurs, then we would look at those street intersections with Blaine Street to make sure all of those improvements would be in place. And then we'll have to coordinate with O dot rail as well and see what, what, and if any additional requirements for safety would be required.
So in the old mill, is it, I've, I've heard different, you know, things what people want to put in there. So that would mostly be straight up commercial or there'll be industrial in there?
It'd be industrial. And so there's, I think the best way to say it, Director, is that to the east of, of South River Street, that's going to be industrial all the way over to Wainouski. Then there would be this node of an acre and a half of mixed commercial residential. There's about three and a half acres for high density residential where we can get roughly around sixty five units. Then down off of fourteenth and waterfront street, there's another mixed commercial. So we can get ground floor commercial and residential above, and then down off of waterfront itself to the north would be residential. And to the south, the intent and hope is, is that to turn the old landfill into a public park.
Okay. So in Park and Recs, like got a big stake in this with the waterfront development, correct?
They do. So CPRD was also on the ad hoc committee and at those meetings. And so the esplanade is, is a piece that becomes part of a recreational component. And so that would tie into the bypass trail. So someday we'll have a bypass trail that will go from up near Providence and will all the way go to Newburgh. And so when you got down to the end of, of River Street, you could either follow fourteenth and follow the bypass trail to Dundee, or you could cross the street and you could get on the esplanade and do that, you know, it's about a quarter of a mile to the east or probably closer to a half a mile to the west. You'd have that view that would look out over the river and French Prairie. That, that trail then could tie into soft path trails down between Chehalum Creek and Rogers Landing.
Okay, thank you.
You said eventually there could be a trail to Dundee. How long do you think that's going to take? Are we waiting for this project to get mostly done before that happens? Or what do you think?
That is a difficult question to answer. So CPR did, CPR got a recent grant for, I think it was one point eight million dollars from Oregon Department of Transportation. And that would extend the trail essentially from industrial Parkway at two nineteen to fourteenth street. So that would give us a trail essentially from Fred Meyer all the way to the end of the cul-de-sac of Weatherly Way. Then it's trying to find the funding to go from the end of Weatherly Way to Dundee. And that's probably got to be close to about two miles. Mile and a half to two miles. And you've got to cross Chehalum Creek, that one. So that will be looking, I would assume CPRD is going to be looking for grant funds and so forth in the future to fund that portion of the trail.
And the crossing in Chehalum Creek has to be its own bridge. There's not room on the, on the bypass bridge.
There's not room on the bypass bridge.
Any other questions? Well, thank you, Elaine and Doug and Dan for coming this evening. It's a bit of a late hour, but this is really exciting and important information. And yeah, and thank you for also inviting partnership between the district and the city committee on this.
I think my, Madam Chair, if I may say, my parting comment would be that we, through the consult confer process, we sent the superintendent an official notice by certified mail and by email. And we got acknowledged by both. So thank you, Dr. Marlock. So that, that started the forty five day consult confer process. So this is the official meeting. We're giving you the presentation. You'd have the opportunity to provide comments back to the city council. And I would need to receive any comments that you may like me to share with the council by July twenty sixth.
Great. Thank you. Good information. Okay. Thanks for coming tonight. Have a good rest of your Tuesday evening.
Thank you.
Thanks, Doug. Thanks, thanks, Elaine.
Next up on our agenda is discussion around delegating authority to superintendent to negotiate for bond services with Nikki. Next up on our agenda is discussion around delegating authority to Superintendent to negotiate for bond services with Nikki.
Okay, so this item, it's really a formality. We are close to completing the contract for Brick Architecture. They've been working. I've both been working on the final language, some odds and ends with both attorneys. We do need to get them paid as of June 30th. We're closing the fiscal year. And so it'll probably be the first or second week in July before all of that language is put into place. And so we're requesting that you give Joe the authority to do the final signature on that contract and we have it complete. I'm just mainly for timing. We don't want to push it in later because there's some back billing that they need to submit so we can get it out of the right fiscal year and all that good stuff. So that's why we're submitting this tonight.
I'll move that the Newburgh School District Board of Directors authorize a superintendent to negotiate and sign a contract to perform bond services with Brick Architecture.
I second.
With a motion, the second is their discussion.
So do I understand that we won't have any, if we approve this, we won't have any say on the contract from here on out? Is that an accurate statement?
Yeah, you're approving him to negotiate, finish negotiating the contract. You saw the draft contract and the RFP and approved brick previously. So this is just fine tuning some of the, the particular language, the attorneys are working out the little odds and ends and making sure everybody's happy on both sides. So so it has been in front of you before. This is the final pieces to it. But yes, he would just be able to approve the final product.
Okay. With a motion and a second, is there further discussion? All right, all those in favor, please raise your hand. And opposed? Okay, passes five to two with Directors Brandon and Shannon in opposition. Thank you, Nikki. And don't go far. Next item on the agenda is a resolution, Resolution 2021 appropriations within federal and state grant funds.
So I spoke to this a little bit during my finance meeting or going over my financial reports. So this is really just moving the budget authority from one function to another. It's not increasing overall funding or spending in any way. It's just moving it from category to category within our grants. And that's just because we have a lot of large grants and some of those, the spending has changed through over the year due to COVID and not getting able to hire staff and that sort of thing. So so I'm just requesting approval of this budget resolution.
I'll move that the Newburgh School District Board of Directors adopt Resolution 2021, a resolution of the Board of Directors of Newburgh School District, 29J, moving appropriations within the federal and state grant fund by title only.
I second.
I have a question for you, Nikki. Can you tell us in general, so we're going to move it to support services and what's that going to pay for in general?
Yeah, the bulk of it was technology was the Chromebook purchase that you heard about when Dr. Brown's brought forward the changes to the SIA grant. So we're just moving, we were able to spend more on the technology pieces because we weren't able to hire a bunch of staff. So that's the bulk of it.
And so we're getting more Chromebooks or something than we were originally going to? I'm not sure what we're covering that we
Yeah. Well, part of it is being able to purchase the Chromebooks under this grant rather than the technology out of the general fund. So we're able to save the general fund a little bit, build up that income balance as we go into the next years. So, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, there is a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. All right, passes unanimously. Thank you, Nikki.
Great, thank you.
Okay, next up on our agenda is board recognition for Directors Mock and Woodruff. Recognition in recognizing their years of service. Would anybody like to start us off? No, there's no recognition. All right, I'll join the meeting. No, I'm kidding. I will. I want to just say thank you, Ron and Bob, for your service to the students of Newburgh and Dundee. Ron, I really appreciate having served with you as vice chair for these last two years. I still remember the conversation we had when I approached you about serving as vice chair, and you were a bit reluctant for a variety of reasons. But I think one of them was that you were, you voiced concern about maybe me not being viewed as the authority in that relationship. And I was not concerned about the overshadowing of that authority. And I think it's worked out really well for us, and it has been a really good partnership. And I would like to think that we balance each other out and we both center student and staff experience and voice because of that, we work very well together. And I know that you have certain, I have certainly learned from you, and I hope that you have also learned from me. And I appreciate the time that we have had together in the roles.
I definitely have learned from you a lot about how how valuable it is to be open and engaging with people. I'm kind of a standoffish kind of guy, and I kind of saw more of how that's a disadvantage in some ways by watching how you work.
If I can make you chat with the checker at the grocery store, that'll be an amazing legacy.
Why would you inflict that on that poor checker? I don't know.
I can go next. Um, both Bob and Ron have taught me a lot coming onto the board. Not really knowing a lot other than my experience as a student with the district. You both really took me under your wing and have been there for me in difficult times because this board has not been an easy experience for me. So I appreciate the constant support and reaching out you've provided for me because I have felt heard, I have felt seen. And I have felt like my experience is valid and like my voice matters at this table. So thank you both. You're truly going to be missed and you might get texts and emails from me to continue bugging you and, you know, reaching out for your knowledge because I'm going to need that support going forward. So thank you both.
I would like to say I appreciate Bob's leadership when I first became on the board and his, his knowledge of, of process and his, his willingness to speak out when, when things went. I remember we were at a conference, all of us were, were getting to, we were, we were sitting there and we started to talk about something and Bob reminded us where we can't talk about board issues now. And he, he, he didn't do it in, in a bad way, but he just gently reminded us. And he, he's your gentle soul and your dedication to the students of, of Newburgh. And I, I appreciate your, your work so much. And Ron, I, I, I can't imagine all the policies that, that we've worked over and your, your, your questioning and your thoroughness. And, and also the questions over the budget, how, how hard you took it about the, the financial difficulties and how hard you, you wanted to make sure we didn't go into the same problems again. And like I said before, you're, both of your integrity, your, your dedication to service and, and your love for children will be sorely missed here.
Yeah, Brandy, I'll go next.
Go for it.
Well, I just like to say, thanks, guys, because being on board for a couple of years now, you, you get the, the full meal deal on how many hours it takes. And, you know, I would just say, coming from a previous life of private business before committing education, being on the board's been, it's been interesting. I know sometimes make it hard on you guys. We don't always agree. But the, the amount of time you guys put in, the thought, all that kind of stuff, you may not seem like I, I listen to you guys all the time, but I, I really do. And thank you for all your service and the, and that. And Ron especially, I'd say, you know, you have a lot of really good things to say. So I listen pretty hard. I know you do your homework, your research, and sometimes your monologues go long, but I always enjoy them because there's a lot of good words in there. And I, I sit back and you brought a lot of points of angles up to me that I really appreciate. I mean, again, I don't always agree, but I really appreciate how much effort you put into those comments. And same thing for Bob. I know we don't always agree, but I really do listen. I wish you guys really well. Kind of envious of those free Tuesday nights. I think, you know, maybe Ron, you get some more baseball in now. So good luck, you guys.
I'll go next. I should have gone before you because you took a lot of what I was going to say. But thank you to both of you for your service. You know, Bob, you, I know you and I have clashed more than a few times, but I really do appreciate your sincerity and your honesty and your forthrightness. And Ron, you know, I, I really, I really will miss your keen eye and your attention to detail and your analytical mind. It was a valuable asset to this board. So thank you to both of you for your service.
Bob, I want to add to that I appreciate the time we've had together and serviced our community on this board. And I, in watching you, learned a lot about how to be a fair and reliable chair. And as a leader, you're, you are fair and you're honest and you're earnest in this service to this community. And I'm grateful for you. There has never been a doubt that the time you've spent at these board meetings and on multiple committees was for the students of Newburgh and Dundee. And I look forward to hopefully continuing our partnership in different, different ways. All right, any other final thoughts?
I'd like to thank all of you for your kind words here. It was really nice to hear from each of you that way. Thank you very much.
My pleasure. Thank you both. And we have certificates of recognition for your years of service and also a gift. And I'll be hand delivering those next week since we were not able to meet in person. Thank you. Okay. With that, let's look at next month's meeting. We'll be meeting July 13th. It's our big annual meeting where we will swear in our new members elect our officers for the board. And we'll have our normal consent agenda, designate signatories, our monthly financial report from Nikki, and also a presentation of the 20, this is crazy, 2022, 23 academic calendar. So with that, thank you all so much. I will close out this meeting of the Newburgh School District Board of Directors. Thank you. Very adjourned.
Thanks, Brandy.